Us being late, our previous meeting did go over. All the persons are present and in chamber. Our next item would be a Pledge of Allegiance and Silent Prayer in lieu of invocation.
Okay, we are on to item four, the reading of the minutes of the previous meetings held on October 18th, November 1st, and November 10th. What are your wishes?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion to approve? All right, please cast your ballots. Dennis? That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. On to item five, it's the second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 11 zoning ordinance specifically regarding architectural standards related to screening trash enclosures in commercial zoning districts. See attachment four. Mr. Delaney?
I'd like to recognize. Okay. Cancel that.
Canceled. Sounds good, Jim. What are your wishes? We have a motion by Bemke, second by Delaney. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven A's and one N. We're on to item six, which is the second reading of an ordinance to repeal and recreate Chapter 31 of the municipal code entitled Historic Preservation to amend provisions so the city may become a certified local government to access historic preservation resources. See attachment five. Mr. Delaney?
I'd like to recognize.
Jim Stack?
Yeah, Jim Stack.
Jim, if you could state your name and address first, please. Thank you.
James Stack, 3220 Sampson Street, Wisconsin Rapids. I came tonight, I had a couple of questions on this. Sorry I didn't miss it the first time. When you speak of historic districts, I'd ask, if you are in a plain home, but it resides in an area that the city decides is a historic district, does that preclude you from making the exterior alterations that you may feel appropriate, or in fact demolishing the property because it no longer meets your use? That's one of the questions I have.
Why don't we let Kyle answer that?
So, the intent is to create and adopt state and national register historic districts, and that does not limit you from improving the structure. The example I like to use is if you have cedar shake siding, even if you're a contributing or non-contributing building within a historic district designated on the National Register, you can still replace your historic cedar shake siding with vinyl siding.
Okay, so you don't lose that option. But if you were to become a designated facility in that area, then you'd have to come before the commission, the Historic Preservation Committee.
You would not have to come before the commission because it would not be a locally designated district. It would just be on the State and National Register of Historic Places, and that allows property owners to access state and federal tax credits if they pursue historic improvements.
Okay. Because I know of one family in town who did that many years ago. The mayor might remember the family, Orkot, their home on Baker. Okay, then. On 3105 B2, in the case of the construction of new improvement upon a historic site or within a historic district, the exterior of such improvement would adversely affect or not harmonize with the external appearance of other neighboring improvements on such site or within the district. From what you've just told me, that conflicts.
So, that is for an application for a locally designated district. If you read above, in a few paragraphs, it identifies local designation. It is not the intent to create locally designated districts. We just have to adopt the language within the code to become a CLG community, which then opens the doors for us to apply for grants, to do an intensive survey of all of our historic properties, and then to pursue an application for state and federal nomination to the National Register of Historic Places. If a district is designated as a local historic district by the common council, then yes, there are certificates of appropriateness and other steps that would regulate improvements on a property, but that is not the intent. These ordinance amendments are not to designate local districts.
All right. I'm just thinking of impingement upon a person's property by someone outside the city, for example, which appears that would be opened if, even though the city does not have a local historic district, but it is noted by another entity that this area is historic, their property could be impinged.
So, I don't know if that's a question or not, but my opinion on the matter is that if a group of neighbors, let's say there's five of them that all had historic homes, and they wanted to ensure that the historic integrity remained within those properties, and they approached the city to say, "We as five homeowners want to be designated as a local district, 100% in agreement to be designated locally," it would be up to the common council as to whether or not they wanted to preserve those resources and designate them as local. I don't think I would personally ever support creating a local district if five, 1%, 10% of the neighbors within that district opposed the nomination locally. There's a difference between a local designation and state and national designation.
Okay. I'm just concerned about the, not the taking of property necessarily, but the taking of opportunities that a person could have with their property, and that's what I wanted to bring up. I apologize for not seeing this previously, and I noticed that this is your second reading tonight, so I just want to express a few things to the council and members, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jim. It's always good to see you.
Sure.
Thank you. What are your wishes? Oh, we have a motion by Austin.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. And we have a second by Bemke. Is there any further discussion or comment? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven A's and one N. We're on to item seven, which is the second reading of an ordinance to discuss rules of the common council specifically relating to the use of video conferencing for standing committees, common councils, and other committee meetings. See attachment six. What are your wishes? We have a motion by Evanson, seconded by Austin. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven A's, one N. And the important item that made on the council agenda is to consider for adoption a resolution adopting the tax levy in the 2023 City of Wisconsin Rapids budget. What are your wishes? Oh, go ahead, Mr. Disarci.
Okay, I'd just like to, you got a new handout.
Yes.
As it's always a changing document, and basically there's two main changes in the document, is that today we got the Wood County apportionment, so that was included in the tax rate information, and that also affects your tax increment amounts. And also, the Wood County Board approved the budget, which included 100% funding for the library aid, which increased the library aid from county from $558,950, that was previously in the budget, to $657,588. And so, that $98,638 is now reflected in the contingency amount in the general fund, and the county aid is reflected in the McMillan Library budget. But if there's other wishes for the use of that funds for that $98,000, obviously I just put in contingency because that way it can be used for any purpose, and the only way it can be expended would be through a budget resolution, taken out of contingency for the appropriate use.
Thank you, Tim. We have a motion. Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion, questions, comments? Question you've been hoping to ask the whole time, but never did? All right, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven A's, one N. We are on to item number nine, which is consider for adoption the action of the Plan Commission meeting, Plan Commission at its meeting held on November 7, 2022. Kyle, if you're feeling up to it?
Certainly, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
The Plan Commission met at 4:00 PM on November 7 in the council chambers. Members present are on file in our office, in the clerk's office. The meeting was called to order at 4:01 PM. The first item was the approval of the report from October 3. There was a motion by Gudrow to approve, seconded by Tao. That action carried six, zero. The second item was Van De Wallen Associates' Wisconsin Rapids Recovery and Redevelopment Plan Update, including progress reports on an online survey. Director Kearns provided a brief summary of the survey results and noted a preliminary draft will be submitted in the future. No action was taken. Item number three was a CSM by Wood County for Survey Map Approval to Combine Three Lots for the courthouse and jail and Dedicate Right-Away on Saratoga Street and Baker Street. Staff provided a summary. Ben Gudrow asked about rezoning the parcels, to which staff responded. There was a motion by Austin to approve the request for combining the lots as well as the right-of-way dedication. There was a second by Kubashak. That motion carried six, zero. Item number four was a request from the City of Wisconsin Rapids in a public hearing in action to amend Chapter 12 of the subdivision plating ordinance specifically relating to other land division and adjustments other than subdivisions to clarify and permit the administrative review process. Director Kearns provided a summary of the request recommending approval. Public hearing opened at 4:10, speaking in favor, none, speaking against, none. That public hearing closed at 4:11 PM. Discussion occurred amongst the Plan Commission members and staff regarding the request. There was a motion made by Chairman Blazer to approve the request, seconded by Kubashak. That motion carried six, zero, and I do want to note it included the removal of language pertaining to minor subdivisions. Item five was a request by the City of Wisconsin Rapids in public hearing in action to amend Chapter 11 of the zoning ordinance specifically to allow residential accessory buildings within the manufactured home park and to establish dimensional requirements for the structures under the manufactured home park supplemental standards. Staff provided a summary. The public hearing opened at 4:18 PM. No one spoke against or in favor. That public hearing closed at 4:19. There again was discussion amongst the members and staff. Eventually, there was a motion made by Austin, seconded by Gudrow, to approve the ordinance amendment as presented, as well as to include language to allow the enclosure of carports for vehicle storage only. That motion carried six, zero. Item six was adjournment. There was a motion by Kubashak to adjourn, seconded by Tao. That motion carried six, zero, and that is the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. What are your wishes? Motion by Veneman to approve, and a seconded by Austin. Any discussions, comments? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. Thank you, Mr. Rubin. Number 10 is consider for adoption the action of the Standing Committee of the Common Council as follows. A is Finance and Property Committee meeting held on November 1st. Mr. Zachar.
Thank you. The Finance and Property Committee met at 4:00 PM on Tuesday, November 1, 2022, in council chambers. Item number one, call the order. Call the order at 4:00 PM. Item number two, review bids received for the procurement and installation of six rooftop units for air conditioning boilers and five controllers for the Centralia Center, and consider recommending the acceptance of a bid and awarding a contract for the project and directing that a resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract be presented to the common council. Item three, it was moved by Bemke, seconded by Zachar, to approve the acceptance of the bid and award the contract for the project to runs refrigeration for $308,436, and direct that a resolution accepting the bid and awarding the contract be presented to the common council. Motion carried three A's to zero N's. Item number four, request from the Community Development Department to utilize funds from the Department Training Education Account for Wisconsin Bike Federation Friendly Community Membership. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Zachar, to approve the utilization of $1,000 from the Training Education Account towards the membership in the Wisconsin Bike Federation Friendly Community Membership. Motion carried three A's and zero N's. Item five, initial discussion regarding a city residential subdivision development in the City of Wisconsin Rapids. No action was taken. Item six, audit of bills. No action was taken. Second item six, 2023 budget discussion. No action was taken. Item seven, set next meeting date. Next regular committee meeting is set for Tuesday, December 6, 2022, at 4:00 PM. In open session, it was moved by Bemke, seconded by Zachar. Item number eight, to go into closed session under Section 19.81E of the Wisconsin statutes. Motion carried three A's to zero N's. Item nine, the committee will return to open session and may consider the agreement with Wood County as discussed in closed session. It was moved by Zachar, seconded by Bemke, to return to open session. In closed session, the committee discussed a request from Wood County to enter into an agreement to allow Wood County temporary exclusive use of the city parcels known as the Triangle Development for jail construction parking and possible staging, and to install temporary fencing around the property. Partial IDs are 3408170, 3408171, 3408172, 3408174, 3408176, and 3408177. No action was taken. Item 10, in open session, it was moved by Zachar, seconded by Bemke, to go into closed session under Section 19.851E of the Wisconsin statutes. Motion carried three A's and zero N's. In closed session, the committee gave staff direction for negotiation and strategy regarding redevelopment and possible purchase of the former Northern Steel Castings, Inc. foundry located at 330 Ninth Avenue South, parcel ID 3402599. Item 11, adjournment. It was moved by Zachar, seconded by Bemke, to adjourn in closed session. Motion carried three to zero. The meeting adjourned at 6:05 PM. With that, I submit the minutes and make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Zachar. We have a motion to approve. Can you hit your button? Thank you. Is there a second? And we have a second. Ms. Evanson.
Thank you. Tim, could you help me find? So, I know the night when we met, we decided we would, okay, we're going to take the bid of the $308,000, but we said that we had $250,000 in replacement reserves through Centralia, but I know there was discussion whether we were going to use ARPA funds or not, and I don't think anything ever got really decided that night unless I missed it.
Right, and yeah, and if you remember, the discussion at Finance was is that the use of ARPA's funds would be utilized for the rooftop rooms if it was needed, but between the replacement reserves and the contingencies in the Centralia Center, we'll be able to cover the full cost of that project, so ARPA funds will not be needed for this particular project.
Unless they wanted to and not take out replacement reserves.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, please cast your ballots. Motion carried eight A's, zero N's. Mr. Zachar, November 15, Finance.
The Finance and Property Committee met at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, November 15, 2022, in council chambers at City Hall. All members of Finance and Property Committee were present. Item number one, call the order. Chairperson Zachar called the meeting in order at 5:00 PM. Item number two, in open session, the committee may vote to go into closed session under Section 19.51E of the Wisconsin statutes, which reads, "Deliberating and negotiating the purchase of public properties and investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session." It was moved by Veneman, seconded by Bemke, to go into closed session. Roll call, roll call vote taken. All members voted in the affirmation. Motion carried three to zero, and the committee went into closed session. In closed session, the committee may have initial negotiations and strategy discussions regarding the sale and possible development of city-owned vacant real estate known as the Triangle Property totaling 1.14 acres and bounded by Jackson Street, First Street North, and Second Street North. Partial IDs 3408170, 3408171, 3408172, 3408174, 3408176, 3408177, and 3408178. In closed session, the committee discussed initial negotiations and strategy regarding the sale and possible development of city-owned vacant real estate known as the Triangle Property totaling 1.14 acres and bounded by Jackson Street, First Street North, and Second Street North. Item three, the committee will adjourn in closed session. It was moved by Zachar, seconded by Bemke, to adjourn. Motion carried three to zero. The meeting adjourned in closed session at 6:07 PM. With that, I respectfully submit these minutes and make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Zachar. And we have a second by Bemke. Is there any discussion, seeing that there's no action? Hey, seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. We're on to item C, which is the Public Works Committee meeting held on November 3. Mr. Austin.
Thank you, Mayor. The Public Works Committee met on Thursday, November 3, 2022, in the council chambers and at City Hall via remote video conference. Myself, Sherri Evanson, and Dennis Pollak were in attendance. Item one, the meeting was called to order at 5:00 PM. Item two, review the Engineering and Street Department Monthly Activity Report. The reports were reviewed. Item three, review the No Parking Ordinance on Bryanwood Ave, the north side from Lincoln Street to the west city limits, and consider removal. Motion by Evanson, seconded by Pollak, to remove the No Parking Ordinance on Bryanwood Ave. Motion carried three, zero. Item four, review a preliminary resolution for public work and improvements for 14th Avenue North between, excuse me, West Grand Ave and Fremont Street proposed for construction in 2024. Motion by Evanson, seconded by Pollak, to approve the preliminary resolution for public work and improvements for 14th Avenue North. Motion carried three, zero. Item five, review a preliminary resolution for public work and improvements for 15th Ave North between West Grand Ave and High Street, proposed for construction in 2024. Motion by Pollak, seconded by Austin, to approve the preliminary resolution for public work and improvements for 15th Avenue North. That motion also carried three, zero. Item six, review the referral list, which was reviewed and updated. Item seven, set the next meeting date, which was set for December 8, 2022, at 5:00 PM. And item eight was adjournment. Motion by Evanson, seconded by Pollak, to adjourn at 5:20 PM. And with that, I'll submit the report of the Public Works Committee for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. The motion by Austin, seconded by Zachar. Is there any discussion on any of the items? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. We're on to item D, Human Resource Committee meeting held on November 8. Mr. Bemke.
Thank you, Mayor. Human Resource Committee met Tuesday, November 8. Item one, the meeting was called to order. Chairperson Bemke at 2:03 PM. Item two, an HR update. A, recruitment. B, open enrollment. Updates were given and no action was taken. Item three, discuss and consider for approval a 2023 general wage increase for non-represented city employees. There was a motion by Delaney, seconded by Bemke, to approve a general wage increase of 3% for non-represented employees of the city. Motion carried three, zero. Item four, discuss and consider for approval a pay increase for Park and Rec Department basketball scorers from $9 to $10.50 per hour to $12 to $13.50 per hour. There was a motion by Reom, seconded by Bemke, to approve a pay increase for Parks and Recreation Department basketball scorers from $9 to $10.50 per hour to $12 to $13.50 per hour. Motion carried three, zero. Item five, consider revising City Hall hours to provide foreclosure of City Hall at noon on Fridays. There was a motion by Bemke, seconded by Delaney, to revise City Hall hours to provide closure of City Hall at noon on Fridays, with specific hours of opening and closing to be determined at a later meeting. The closure at noons on Fridays will be for a six-month trial period beginning the first Monday of May, 2023. Motion carried three, zero. Item six, there was a motion, adjournment, motion by Reom, seconded by Delaney, to adjourn. Motion carried three, zero. The meeting adjourned at 2:42 PM. And with that, I respectfully submit the Human Resource Committee report.
Thank you. We have a motion by Delaney, seconded by Reom. Is there any further discussion? Go ahead, Ms. Evanson.
Thank you. I just had one quick question. So, if we're reducing the hours on Friday, does that mean that staff will not be in the office as well? I'm sorry, Ms.
Yeah, I think that'll be a later discussion. There'll be longer hours, Monday through Thursday, and then it'll be close to the public at noon, but there may be still people here in the afternoon.
Because I just worry because we're here for the public, and if we reduce the time that the public could be here, I don't think that would be a good service, but as long as maybe... long as maybe they're going to be open later during Monday through Thursday, that could be advantageous. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero nays. We're on to item eleven, reports of other committees, commission, boards, and department reports. What are your wishes? We have a motion by Delaney, seconded by Veneman. I just want to point out the Park and Rec minutes that you received tonight. They did approve, the Park and Rec Commission approved creation of a dog park, but that was not through the budget process, so next month you'll see a referral through Finance, and then ultimately to council for that project, and there's some other things that are going to be associated with that. Just to let you know. Any other discussions, comments? Seeing none? Please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero nays. Any referrals submitted? Yep?
I have three referrals from Alderperson Delaney. One is for the H.R. Committee to change the Alderperson pay to zero dollars. One is to Legislative to create an ordinance limiting Alderpersons to three or four consecutive terms. And the third one is to have two common council meetings and no committee meetings per month.
Sounds good. Thank you. I will refer those to Legislative. Ms. Evans?
Thank you. I was just wondering if, and I'll get that to Jennifer as well, but I was just wondering for H.R. if there was some kind of update regarding the wage study this April. I believe it'll be going on two years, so just an update on that would be nice, or a presentation would be great. Thank you.
Hopefully, that'll be forthcoming soon. Anything else? All right, we are on to item thirteen, is adjournment? We have a motion by Raum. All right, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your ballot. Mr. Austin? You're good. That motion carried eight A's, zero nays. Thank you, everybody. Have a safe holiday and a safe hunting season.